It may feel like we're frozen in time right about now. On one hand, everything's changed, and on the other, nothing's changing quickly enough. Winston Churchill said, when you're going through hell, keep going. As we work our way through this pandemic, and we will come out the other side, the important thing is to keep going. San Antonio City Councilman Clayton Perry agrees and believes showing our compassion and helping each other keep going is more important now than ever. Welcome to Bearcast. I'm Randy Langford, and this is Bearcast, a weekly interview with business, political, education, and nonprofit leaders. We're examining the relationships between all four and how each one benefits from the success of the other three. Clayton Perry grew up in Giddings, Texas, learning the value of empathy from his father, Hayes Perry. After receiving his degree in science in building construction at Texas A&amp;M, he served almost 21 years in the Air Force and retired from Headquarters Air Education and Training Command at Randolph Air Force Base as a Lieutenant Colonel in 2000. During this time, he earned his master's degree in aerospace technology from Embry-Riddle. He served on his Neighborhood Association Board and as its president. He's represented San Antonio's 10th District since 2017 and is chairman of the Building Standards Board in 2017 through 2022 Bond Committee. Councilman Perry, thanks for joining me. I appreciate you being here.
Absolutely. It's good to be here.
I kind of want to go into your background a little bit, and when we're talking about public service, you have a unique background there. I know you served almost 21 years in the Air Force and retired as a Lieutenant Colonel back in 2000, and then run for the city council, and that commitment to service intrigues me. I know you didn't just wake up one day and decide to hold public office. Where does that drive for service come from? Did you have any role models when you were a kid? Where did you get this urge?
Yeah, it actually started when I was a kid. My dad was a plumber. He had his own little company in a small, little farming community called Giddings, Texas, if you know where that's at.
Sure.
It's between Austin and Houston, and I started going out with him when I was just a little bitty kid, probably about eight years old, helping him on the jobs and that. And I saw that from my dad on the customer service portion and, you know, dealing with people and working with them and that kind of thing to... I looked at that as kind of a public service, getting out there and helping. And then I graduated from high school and went to Texas A&amp;M and really enjoyed that opportunity. And there again, I joined the Corps of Cadets. I was in the Aggie Band, and we did a lot of type, service-type activities outside of school and outside of band. We reached out and helped people also, different opportunities there. So, you know, growing up at home, then at A&amp;M, and then getting in the Air Force, and Air Force is a great career. I was only going to stay in four years to pay my scholarship, and I kept dealing with great people and great locations, and it worked into 21 years. And then after that, I retired, as you said, in 2000, and became involved in community activities. I got involved with my homeowners association. I was on the board for several years, and then I was president for several years. And then I too worked in a nonprofit. I was a president of a nonprofit with the team that we work to raise money for wounded warriors here at town.
Sure.
And that worked out real well. And then on top of that, I got involved in city-type of activities with... Well, I joined several boards and commissions, and that's where, you know, I'm doing that on my own time, just as well as that other nonprofit I worked for. It was very gratifying because you could see the results of what I was putting into those committees and boards. And then back in 2013, I totally retired from work and spent four years devoting more and more time to these extracurricular activities that became kind of my full-time job. And to be perfectly honest, I had to start pulling back because the more you get involved, the more time it takes. And I was actually getting overcommitted, so I had to pull back a little bit. And then my predecessor on council said, hey, Clayton, why don't you think about running? I'm not going to run this next time, and think about it. And I did, and I said, you know, I can do this. I can do this on city council and again, do that public service. And so it started when I was just a little bitty kid, and that all kind of stuck with me. And the more I, you know, participated, the more I enjoyed it. Sometimes it wasn't a lot of joy, let me tell you, because nonprofit work is very tough work, and working on boards and commissions for the city is not easy either. So, yeah, it started when I was a little kid, and here I am today. I didn't really, I had no idea. I never thought I'd be a politician. It's a little foreign to me, but yeah, it worked out great, and I'm enjoying city council life.
Now, I know you serve on the Public Safety and Transportation and Mobility Committees for the city council. What about those particular components are of interest to you? What attracted you to those committees?
Well, on the Transportation Committee, that's my background. My degree was building construction. They call it construction science now at A&amp;M. But even as a little boy, as I was out there working, you know, constructing and that kind of thing. And then into the Air Force, I was an Air Force Civil Engineer, which that just, it was a progression that I stayed with. And so that's my background. That's my forte, if you will, on that type of thing. Where the Transportation Committee, we look at the requirements. We identify the requirements. We plan them. We design them, and then we construct them. It's a long, drawn-out process, but it has to be done. And so that's what drew me to the Transportation Committee. The, let's see, the other one you said was...
Public Safety?
Public Safety. Oh, yeah. That's another committee that I'm on that... It's, right now, it's very interesting because of a lot of issues going on, and that's been identified. And we, on the Public Safety Committee, we are working to gather that information. What can we do to make changes, to make it better for the community? You know, not only in the police department, but in the fire department as well, as well as emergency management services. All of those things fall under this committee, and what we're doing is taking a look at our policies to make sure that they're up to date. And if they need to be changed, we'll put those wheels in action and make those changes through the council.
It's ever-evolving. It's not like you set it up and it's done. Okay, we're through with that. We'll move on to something else. There's always a new wrinkle.
Yeah.
One of the overarching goals of San Antonio and any big city is workforce development. The better the workforce, the better the city, the more successful the city. When we were designing Bearfest, we wanted to give students an inside look at the operations of a nonprofit organization to show them that there are jobs available in that sector. And I've had teachers tell me that their students are getting more than that. They're learning about media production, and they're learning about how nonprofits operate, but they're also learning job skills like communications, critical thinking, collaboration. How important are those job skills going to be to these students as they enter the job market?
Well, I'll tell you what, when I'm hiring in my office and, you know, people progress, and I don't expect people to stay there very long. You know, they do a great job, and then they find other opportunities, which is fantastic, and I support them with that. But when I'm hiring, I look for those qualities because that's very, very important in today's workforce. And especially looking at nonprofits, like I said before, it's not that easy to run a nonprofit or be a part of a nonprofit because there is a lot of extra work. You have to make ends meet. You know, you don't always have enough resources, i.e. money, to do the things, everything you want to do. But it's so gratifying, and the nonprofits that I've become familiar with and have worked with, that's what it's all about, is having that compassion, filling a need out there that the government can't necessarily fill. And so I look at that as kind of filling the gap, if you will, on services that the government can't provide. The nonprofits step up and they engage and, you know, fundraise and everything to provide that service in the community. So it's very, very important because the government cannot do everything. And I keep saying that, and the government doesn't have unlimited resources either. You know, we're always struggling to find the resource to support whatever. So absolutely, those are very, very important, and it's something that I look for when I'm hiring also.
Good to know. It's good for students to know that they're developing marketable skills, that this isn't just for fun. You're learning some lessons here. Speaking of learning lessons, professional educators, people far smarter than me, talk about the four Cs of education in the 21st century. Creativity, collaboration, communications, and critical thinking. Given that we are in a global pandemic, that's kind of the elephant in the room. What other skills are students going to have to have to be employable in the going forward, in the post-COVID world?
Yeah, I think one of the things that people have learned, and it's very important moving forward, is how to adapt to the situation. You know, take, for example, my office. Within a day, we had, well, we had an office atmosphere where everybody's working together, and you know what everybody's doing, that kind of thing. And then all of a sudden, we had to shift, sending people home and working out of their homes, and we had to adapt to that. And it was difficult at first, but we've kind of gotten the routine. That's not saying that being in an office atmosphere is not needed because, yeah, it's great to be sitting next to someone and hearing what they're doing and discussing issues and that kind of thing. Something that you don't get on these video conferences.
Yeah, no Zoom call is ever going to replace hallway conversation.
Absolutely. So I would say another really important area is adaptability, is how do you adapt to the changing requirements, the environment, everything that goes along with that, to support whatever organization you're working in. And especially in the nonprofit world, again, you're always trying to figure out how you can do things, how you can do things smarter, how you can do things cheaper, and to make those resources last even longer. So to me, adaptability is pretty important up there as well.
This is also the first time a lot of these kids have collaborated with adults as adults. When their normal life is teacher, student, parent, child, but when we put them inside these nonprofits and have them working with them, it becomes client-vendor. The students are creating a product for the nonprofit organization, and they have to operate on a new level. I've had teachers tell me that in the course of doing that, and that, like you say, adaptability, as they adapt to that, they see their students become more mature, more confident, more outgoing, more willing to express themselves. Again, does that make them more employable?
Absolutely, Randy. I would say that, you know, 99% of any job, you're having to deal with people. And if you don't know how to communicate, if you don't know how to look someone in the eye and listen to them and be able to synthesize that into an action, you know, you're going to do that for the rest of your life. And I used to look at, people say, well, how did you jump into this politics like you did a while ago? And how did you make it seem so easy? And I thought about that. I said that, you know, no matter what position you're in, or no matter what you do, you're dealing with politics every day, really, and it's how you deal with people, how you can satisfy a customer or whatever and move on to the next step. So it's not just, it's not all these other things, all your normal day-to-day activities, but how you deal with people, how you communicate, how you listen, and how you can meet their expectations. And that's very, very important. I can see where this program fits really, really well into that.
One of the things, and I want to go back to your nonprofit days. We're giving students a good, long inside look at these nonprofits. We pair the teams with their nonprofit organizations in October-ish, and we don't have the premiere until February. So these students are exposed to this nonprofit organization for months. And so they not only learn what the nonprofit does, but why they do it, and who they do it for, and how the overall society benefits from that. I'm going to let you tell me how that makes them better citizens.
Well, again, it's, you kind of said it, why are we doing this? Why, you know, not only what, but why? And again, I think it comes back to, you know, filling that gap in society to provide whatever services there are. And the more you work in the community, the more you give back to the community, the more beneficial it is not only to you, but the community as well. I mean, that's what it's all about. I mean, we are a compassionate city, and that's, we always have to have that in the back of our mind. What, where should we be focusing? And how do we focus? And how do we plug that into our normal day-to-day life? And that's what's so important about nonprofits. And absolutely, when you do that, you become engaged as a citizen in the city, and you learn about what those requirements are. And you don't only learn that in your box or your environment, but you learn it across the entire city, and you learn it from other nonprofits that you will work with. You have to work with other nonprofits. There might be others that are providing very similar or like services that you're providing. And that's where you need to bridge that gap. Where can you work together?
Right.
To better provide those services. So absolutely, make some better citizens all around.
And it's hard to explain how gratifying it is to engage with a nonprofit organization. But when you worked with wounded warriors, when you see their needs met, or if you're working with animals and you see a dog find a home, or you're working with kids and you see them blossom in school and prosper, there's no amount of money that can pay for that feeling. And I absolutely encourage every student, whether participating in Bearfest or not, to engage with a nonprofit, something that feeds your passion, and just give it some time. Let yourself be immersed in that and get that feeling, and it's liable to ignite a fire that burns for the rest of your life.
Absolutely, and that is, again, that is so, so important that we have people that are willing to step up and participate in these nonprofits. And it's all about helping others, whether it's people or animals or the environment, whatever. And there are literally hundreds and hundreds of nonprofits out there, and they're all looking for additional help.
Absolutely. It's interesting that you mentioned the number of nonprofits in San Antonio or in the world, really. San Antonio is the only place, the only city where an event like Bearfest happens, where we pair high school students with nonprofit organizations to create media for that nonprofit organization. Then we have a big premiere in the spring where the kids get to go to the Tobin Center, the showcase of San Antonio, and see their production on a big screen with 1,000 people in the audience and get that feedback that that's the payoff. That's where you get that satisfaction, where you realize the impact that just high school kids can have. I know kids think, there are kids that think, I'm just one kid. How much difference can I make? How important am I? You'll be amazed at how important you are and how much difference you can make. We've run the festival for four years now, and to date, we've had about 1,000 kids from 60 high schools in and around San Antonio make videos and graphics and photography, and even original music. These kids are writing songs about their nonprofit organizations. And they've served about 120 nonprofits just in and around San Antonio, including in your district, in District 10, MacArthur High School just this year partnered with Project Angel Fairs and did just a spectacular job making people aware. I didn't even know Project Angel Fairs existed. And what it is, is it's an organization that raises money to bring families, entire families of kids with special needs, to bring them to Morgan's Wonderland and let them experience that. There's no way to explain how it feels when you see that family and their child who normally doesn't get to play on a playground. They're not able to do that. To see them have that experience, no amount of money. Nothing can, you can't buy that.
Nope.
Also in District 10 was Madison High School partnered with Chromosome 18 Registry. Again, kids with special needs that you just can't explain how gratifying it is to see those kids light up and be treated like just anybody else. That's all they want. It's just treat me like anybody else. St. Mary's Hall, another District 10 school, was partnered with Make-A-Wish for Central and South Texas, and it just doesn't get any better. When a kid is facing physical issues, health issues, to be able to give them the one thing they most want in the world, oh, how good is that? And that just tells me that the kids in San Antonio, the young people in San Antonio, are stepping up to support their community. And at the same time, the nonprofit community is stepping up to support those kids, giving them this opportunity to experience what it's like to have that kind of satisfaction. And we, you know, I don't want to say we sugarcoat it, but we make it engaging for the students by giving them the opportunity to create media. They sign up for the chance to create media, but what they get out of it is the chance to engage with a nonprofit organization and get that feeling. So the kids that are volunteering and the nonprofits that are volunteering and making this happen, what does that say about our city? You mentioned that San Antonio is a compassionate city. I'm going to let you riff on that for a while.
Yeah, you know, and speaking of Morgan's Wonderland, that's in District 10 also. So we're very proud of that organization. We're proud of that activity that's available out there. When my grandkids come down, that's their favorite place to go play, especially in the water park. So unfortunately, during this pandemic, they've had to close it down. You know, we're just waiting, waiting to, you know, for things to cool off and get back to somewhat normalcy for it to open up again. So that's sad, and that really hurts this community and surrounding communities as well. But you're right. I mean, San Antonio is a very compassionate city. Look, I have been all over this world. I've traveled. I have traveled. I'm not even going to venture to guess how many miles that I've spent up in the air, but I've been all over the world, and this feeling that you have here in San Antonio, you can feel it. I mean, the city is friendly, outgoing. We try to help one another when someone is down. People reach out to help, and that's what makes this place special. I don't ever want to see that die down or fade away from San Antonio because I guarantee you, you don't get that in other cities across the US. No way.
And you can see the way it's manifested during the pandemic, when people are volunteering all over town to deliver meals or to help with cleaning or to clean up graffiti and make the city just a city we can all be proud of, and I certainly am. And I know you wouldn't be on the city council if you weren't proud of it, so, yeah.
Absolutely. I mean, and again, you see that across the city. It's not just in one area, but you see it across the city.
All over town.
Important, and, you know, I hope we can have it this year where we, you know, we delayed Fiesta. But, you know, even in atmospheres like that, everybody gets along and everybody's having a good time. And it reaches far and wide about San Antonio and our culture, our heritage, that we're able to continue to support these types of events and how smoothly they run. So I'm very proud to be here. Been here since 91, and this is home.
I'm not going anywhere. Teachers tell me when we first pair their students up with a nonprofit that the kids are pretty casual. And like I said, that's how we entice the students into the festival, is you're going to be creating media for a nonprofit organization, and they get excited about that. It's going to be fun. It's going to be playtime. We get to play with the lights and the cameras and do interviews, and it'll just be fun. But then they meet the nonprofit. They meet the people they're going to be working with, and it suddenly gets very serious. This is not a game. This is not for fun. These are real people with real needs who are really counting on us to help them advance their mission. And the kids step up. They're not afraid of it. They want to tell these stories, and they do it in such a remarkable way. Every year, the stories these kids tell just blow me away. I shouldn't be surprised anymore, but I am every year. And that speaks to a level of maturity for the kids that I don't think high school students get enough credit for. They're more engaged than people think. They, you know, you may, oh, they're taking selfies, and they're self-involved, and all they care about is them and their little clique of friends, and that's just not true. If you give a kid a target, if you give them a cause and an opportunity in some direction, they'll run with it. And you've traveled, you've seen a lot of the world, and you've been engaged in San Antonio for a long time. Has that been your finding? Have you seen that?
Absolutely. I raised three children as a single parent. Got them all the way through school and into college, out of college. They're all successful. And it's how you give responsibilities to them. Give them a responsibility and let them run with it. You know, they're not always going to be successful. You're not guaranteed success at any stage in your life on what you want to do or what you're going to do. So I say, give out the responsibilities. Like you said, let them run with it and help them when they need help, but let them be creative and let them take that responsibility. So very, very important, and again, it's all about learning. I learn something every day, no matter how small or how large. I learn something every day. And again, it's communication, how you communicate with people because you can say one thing, and how you communicate that thing shows more than what you're saying. So you got to take all that into account on, again, how you deal with people on a daily basis because that's the only way that you're going to be able to get things done. You have to hone your leadership skills on dealing with people and how you can move a project forward and have it become successful. But if you're not successful on something, if you have responsibility for something and things don't go well or things, the wheels completely come off, don't be discouraged because that, again, is a learning process. You go back and do something else that you can be successful with. So, yeah, it's easy to get discouraged. I've been discouraged many, many, many times in my life.
Me too.
But you have to get back up and get back after it because you're guaranteed nothing in this life. It's all about you and how you're able to move forward and getting others to follow and how you communicate with those.
I mentioned that we make a big deal out of the premiere every spring. We have it at the Tobin, and we have a red carpet, and there's background dropbacks for photos. And kids get a gift bag, and they get to see their video on a big screen, and there's 1,000 people in the audience. And we make it clear to them how important they are. And I've had students tell me that they appreciate just being taken seriously. And I just, I want to send that message that you're absolutely valuable. You are a contributing member of our society, and we're counting on you. And how important is that kind of encouragement to let those kids know that you're tomorrow's leaders? We're counting on you. We need you.
Well, let me tell you, Randy, that is very, very important. And I've been on both sides of that issue, on being a worker and having your superiors or someone out there pat you on the back and saying a good job. And I've tried to follow, I've learned those lessons as I grew up in different jobs I've held. And I've tried to apply that in recognizing people for what they do and how they contribute. That is very, very important, especially in jobs that, you know, you're dealing with people and customers out there. you're dealing with people and customers out there. And I I don't know a job out there that doesn't, but um, people tend to, I'm, I'm trying to think how to say this, people tend to criticize very easily.
Oh, sure.
Or not, not appreciate something. You you do something for them and they go on, you never, never hear from them again. Hey, that's okay. You you have to be able to take that and move on. But when somebody turns around and says, hey, thank you very much. We really appreciate you. And you you get that pat on the back, it's like, this, this is what, it makes it all worth it to be able to get that, you know, get that recognition. And don't forget, you, if you're working for a nonprofit or any other organization, you can do the same thing. You can be telling people, hey, I appreciate you for what you're doing. You did an outstanding job on this project. So um, don't always be looking for that recognition. Try to give out that recognition as well.
Be the sender.
Yeah, yeah. And it it's very, very important. And again, the nonprofit world is is not easy. And um, I really, I really appreciate the nonprofits for what they're doing to step in and fill those gaps that isn't always um, available out through the government or uh, other, other organizations, paid, you know, for-profit organizations. So I think this is, this is wonderful. It's wonderful for y'all to be recognizing everyone for the hard work that they do. And uh,
We're pretty proud of them.
It's um, it's great to see this in action. It really is.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much. Thanks for being here. Thanks for your insight. Thanks for your leadership. Thanks for uh, being a big part of San Antonio and I I look forward to getting together face to face.
Good, good. You can look each other in the eye, right?
Right. Nothing, nothing better than those hallway conversations.
That's right. Exactly.
Take care.
Yes, sir. You too.